Okay, welcome to the work session with the Word of God Commission. Today we've got, we did the work session items today. Is the presentation on wastewater treatment from Aaron Jensen. And it looks like Commissioner Ivey, you put this on, I don't know if you'd like to do any introduction or anything. See Nathan, are you on? Okay, we'll turn the time over to you, Aaron.
Um, thanks for having us here, uh, taking the time. Through our conversations with some of the commissioners, the, the, on our potential project, the indication and direction that we've received is to come present a potential concept or ideas of how we can facilitate wastewater treatment in some kind of, uh, develop, the PUD development with, here within the county. So as we, yeah, as we come, uh, you know, we're, we're here at your behest and in quest, we have just kind of a simple introduction on this. Let's see, this one right here. Um, we've kind of looked at several different options and, and to say that these are the only two options would be misleading, but these are two options that we think are financially feasible, uh, as well as very conducive to what we're trying to accomplish. And so as part of our presentation, we're going to have a presentation effectively by, uh, Scott with Aqua Engineers and then later with, uh, Dave with Oranco, talking about two potential systems, some of which exist already in your county. So this isn't some new fancy technology. This is just concepts that have some scalability to facilitate, uh, a variety of development. Um, so our hope is that you'll look at this, uh, understand what, what flexibility exists within these systems. And we can use that as a, a baseline for talking about potential development, uh, through the PUD code within your county. Uh, the, the both, both the systems are vetted, uh, they're, they got a long history as, and I think if you have specific questions, you know, we have brought the experts to discuss that. The key points that we want to bring into this though, and I want you to focus on is, is not, you know, gallon flows and get lost in the numbers, but just the idea that there's real flexibility in, in how we can accommodate and address sewer based on increased, uh, code restrictions from the state and, and our current situation there and soils within, within our potential development. So with no more introduction than that, I, unless there's questions, I'm going to go ahead and turn the time over.
Um, how, how much of, how much of this have you worked with the planning, planning commission with Bryce Armstrong and his group?
We haven't, um, we haven't done anything with your planning commission yet.
So this is, this is just a concept idea?
Yeah, this is, the, the idea that we, that we were given, um, previously is address it with you guys, if there's interest and, and appetite to further discussion, then we would be pushed down for that. The, you know, you would get a top-down direction to your planning commission to discuss it and, and flush it out.
Is there, and, and how much time do you plan on taking?
Um, you know, we should be done in 10 to 15 minutes.
Okay, great.
Well, this is the first time I've been in a public meeting with a mask on. I've been doing Zoom so much, I don't even know what it's like to be in person anymore. Um, so, uh, I've been working with the fellows behind me here on looking at alternatives for property that they have in the river bottoms. One, uh, technology that we would like to talk about is MBR. It's called membrane bioreactor. Uh, there's several of them in Utah already. Um, I have it, I have some handouts here, I can leave with you when we're done, but, uh, most of it's on the, the PowerPoint there. And so the thing you would ask is, you know, why use an MBR versus other technologies? We think that it has a pretty good, uh, application here because of several reasons. Uh, first of all, it's, it's a technology that's been accepted by the Department of, uh, Environmental Quality and our Division of Water Quality in the state of Utah. Uh, there are, uh, facilities just down the road at Santaquin. I know that Provo and Spanish Fork are both going to upgrade their facilities with an MBR technology. Um, and we put the first MBR facility in at Oakley, Utah. And I've actually have a little movie on that and I'll leave that with you guys to look at near, um, at your leisure. Uh, we made it several years ago, was actually funded by the vendor of that technology we use. There's several vendors of MBR technology. What MBR stands for is membrane bioreactor. And why is it different? Uh, it, it's different because it, the membrane actually sits down in the wastewater and takes the place of, of clarification and filtration. You actually pull the vacuum on the membrane and pull the water through it and leave all the wastewater behind that's, uh, the bacteria and everything that's degrading it. And so why is it better than others? Well, uh, because of that, um, membrane, you're able to get almost drinking water quality coming out of a wastewater plant. And you're able to treat down to really low levels of chemicals and whatnot that are emerging pollutants that are coming down the road, uh, at us that, uh, they're not being monitored yet, but they will be soon. Uh, as we learn how to test for things, our limits get stricter and stricter. So this is a technology.
If I'm not mistaken though, even though you pull it down like that, you still have to run it through, uh, I mean, federal law makes you still run it through a wastewater management treatment before you dispose of it into a lake or stream. Or are you saying that this gets you to that point to where?
This gets you to that point that it will, it will exceed, you know, all discharge limits that we have right now to going into lakes or streams. Uh, the beauty of this is that I, you know, I would look at reuse or recharge, which is what we do at, at quite a few places, uh, instead of just discharging it and, and getting too much involved with what we call a national pollution nation system. I would look at, uh, taking it to reuse during the summer and then infiltration during the winter and recharging.
So you don't, cause it, like over in the Magna area, um, they've got a plume of toxic, the toxicity that's coming through.
Yeah, that's from the mine.
From the mines.
Yeah.
And they run it through, but it's a bio, it's a bio filtering system.
Yeah, that's a combination, what we call reverse osmosis. We actually run that plant.
Oh, you run that?
My contract, my, my contract operations runs that plant.
Years ago I went through that and the thing that I found fascinating is they told me that even though they ran it through and they came out as cleaner, cleaner than any of that, they still have to run it through the facility, uh,
They do.
And, and dump it back into almost like dirty water, um, and then run it through the facility because of federal law.
And, and it's just a federal law, yeah, yeah. And, and, but in this case, we're, we're able to discharge directly.
Okay.
You know, we could either discharge to a stream or lake, or better yet, reuse the water and, um, and recharge. Something that we ought to look at as we, you know, water is what's going to limit our development in Utah. That's, that's what's going to stop us from growing. And the better we can utilize water resources, this allows you to do that. It allows you to recycle the water. Uh, it's got a very small footprint, it fits inside of a building. So for example, the one in Oakley is in a barn-like building, right on the edge of town and people don't even know there's a wastewater plant there. And, uh, so that's kind of where we're headed, are these small, um, they're, they're more simple to run, a little harder to maintain. In other words, you've got to be more mechanically oriented, but you don't have to know the biological part of everything because you don't have to, uh, you have this membrane separating everything for you. So, uh, it's something that we think is, it's very modular and it can be expanded as you grow. Um, you can start with so many membranes and add and add and add. Uh, so I think it's a, it's a good alternative, you know? Provo City, for example, I think they've selected a membrane for their expansion. And they're looking at it both for water recharge and for reuse and, and to help them with their water resources also. Um, we, we contract operate a couple of MBR plants, uh, one for Oakley and one for Wolf Creek up in Eden, uh, the Eden area, Ogden Valley. And, uh, the Oakley one's been running since 2004 and we just barely replaced the membrane. So they're guaranteed for 10 years, we're getting over 10 years out of them, so they're, they're, they're working very well. Um, anyway, are there any other questions about that? I think it would work very well for this application, very modular, no odors. Um, visually you can't tell it's there.
What do you do with the solids?
The solids, you dewater them and you can either take them and compost them offsite somewhere, or you can take them to a landfill, uh, meets the paint filter test for a landfill. Or, uh, you know, right now those are the two, or, or direct land, land application can't happen until you compost. You've got to compost it first. Okay. Are there any other questions about that? Did you guys have anything else you wanted to bring up about it? Okay.
My name is David LaPray, I'm with, uh, Oranco Systems and I'm going to talk about another technology for wastewater collection and treatment. So Oranco has been in the industry of collection and treatment for many years. Uh, we've been helping small communities for over 30 years, uh, starting with a small community in Glide, Oregon. And, um, we take an approach where we want to look at a system that's going to be sustainable for, for a community, not only upfront cost, but long-term operation maintenance. Uh, so we've, we've developed a collection system called liquid-only sewer, where we, um, send just the liquid to a wastewater treatment plant, which is a, what we call a packed bed filter. Uh, so we have a liquid-only sewer to packed bed filter approach, which also provides, uh, water quality that is, that is ideal for, uh, water recharge and irrigation, subsurface irrigation. So it, uh, as you can see from this, from this photo, there's, um, uh, the, the, the homes are, have, each have a package on them, uh, which delivers just the liquid, uh, via a small diameter line, pressure line, much like a water system to a, uh, what we call a packed bed filter. And the reason we, we use packed bed filters is because they're very simple to operate and maintain. In fact, the, the state of Utah, um, recommends that, that you have an operator at the site about once every six months. Uh, with these larger facilities that we do, um, typically the operation maintenance is going to be once a quarter compared to, uh, compared to that, but, um, this has been permit, permitted in the state of Utah and we have many applications of it. So the packed bed filter is a filter, um, material which we incorporate into a, in a recirculate, in a recirculation, um, setup where we send the water through the filter many times. So the, so there's no activated sludge, there's no generation of solids in this process. You basically take all your carbon compounds and, uh, remove them from, from the system. There's a slow buildup over time of volatile solids that you have to maintain, but it's, it's significantly less than other types of treatment technologies. Uh, so we've, um, established ourselves in the state of Utah. We have many projects, including, um, a project here in Utah County. And, uh, um, we, we are, um, excited to work with the local jurisdictions to get this project in. Are there any questions?
A couple of questions. And so, I mean, the packed bed, uh, filtering system, we can use those on septic systems too. That's, that's one of the, one of the areas that you can, it's an upgrade from the traditional or the older ones. I've, I've never seen it on a large scale basis, but where, is it, is it that little, that round spot, the area? Where are you taking the solids out at?
So, um, let me back up here. So, um, so if you look here, there's a, what we call a prelos tank and that's like a package, much like a grinder system, but it's a, a larger tank where we, where we, um, where it holds the solids at the, at the, um, house. And you get your anaerobic digestion there, so you get your digestion, much like a clarifier at the home. So the, the collection system is actually your clarifier. So when you get to your treatment plant, you don't have, you don't have solids to manage. You manage them, uh, with a bumper truck.
That's that green round area out front of the house?
Yes. So these, these solids then are managed on, uh, typically 10 to 15-year basis. Uh, and then they're taken to either, uh, a landfill or, or a municipal wastewater treatment plant. So these, with the packed bed filter, something you should understand is that these are, uh, limited as far as footprint because with the packed bed filter, the reason you see them on very small applications is that, uh, they're, they're designed in a way that they can be used on small applications and be very effective in treatment and, and, and energy use and, um, and operation maintenance. But when you get to larger flows, um, above 100,000 gallons per day, then they become, uh, less cost-effective. So, so these are, so we're, we're looking at, um, limiting, limit, limiting the application of these under that, or using what we call decentralization, is where you take pockets of communities and, and you treat, and you have multiple treatment plants throughout the community.
Is the water line pressurized that, that takes it back to your secondary treatment system?
Yeah, so, um, unlike a gravity system, which you accumulate INI over, over time and you have to manage that, these are pressure sewers, so they, so with the high-quality, uh, package that we provide, you eliminate the INI factor over a long course of time. So you're not having to deal with problems with INI down the road.
That makes sense, because it would be nice if all the homes neatly lined up like that, but they're going to be easily all over the place and.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So we've sat through like four hours of presentation that you just got in five minutes. You guys are smarter than I am. I was a little slower on the learner, learner on that. Um, any other questions that you guys have for us on this? Our perspective is, we have two viable systems that work. There's pros and cons to each system as there is to every system. Um, but, uh, depending on scope, sizing and timing of, of potential development, we can, uh, use one or potentially even both of these systems, depending on how we structure things within, within the region that they're used. Um, in, in the case of this project, you know, we're expecting to do either a.
Which project?
I'm sorry, with our potential project, you know, we're looking at trying to do, you know, either a special.
Which project is that?
We have proposed it.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, we're looking at potentially doing a, you know, special improvements district or, uh, you know, some other, you know, SSD, uh, to manage and oversee this so that we have, you know, that funded differently. We think we can get property participation on that based on the support we've received for this process up to this point. Um, in addition to that, we're looking at, you know, creating HOAs that create additional buffer and, and helping manage and oversee and train people on, on how to manage these systems. So trying to reduce, uh, potential issues that, that might, you know, push back up to the county. And, uh, as we've discussed and talked with both attorneys and, and these gentlemen that have facilitated these in other regions, we believe that there's quite a bit of, uh, data that says that an SID works just fine. It insulates, uh, insulates the county from any repercussions that may, may flow uphill, so to speak. But with that, any questions on these sewer that, that I can answer, or better yet, that our consultants can answer?
I don't have any questions.
Yeah. Then we'll conclude, thank you very much for your time.
I make a recommendation to you though.
Yep.
Um, you gotta talk with the health department because they deal with, they deal with this and the planning commission as well in, in both of them and looking at that to see how they, how they would work with our rules and regulations and our zoning and, I mean, both, both sides will, will touch this issue.
Absolutely. Um, is your thought process, I mean, can we get a recommendation to, to get this explored on the planning commission level?
Yeah, I would, I would take it to, to Bryce and, and show him what you're trying to do. They'll probably have a lot more questions than I do on it and what. And then they'll be able to look at it according to the rules and regulations that we have or the ordinances that we have in place. And one may fit cleaner than the other, I don't know. But they, I, I would, I would say go to them and, and take this and see how this, uh, could be used with underneath the application that we have now when it comes to PEDs and others and zoning.
Okay, we'll do exactly that. Thank you for your time. All right, thank you.
Okay, we now turn to a public defender's, uh, 2020 budget review.
All right, uh, my name is Benjamin Young, uh, financial manager for Utah County Public Defender Association. Uh, I have with me, uh, Josh, uh, Tom and Debbie, uh, part of the management team. We'll kind of get into that as we get into our presentation. Um, we met a couple of days ago to do a review of the audit. So this is kind of going to be talking about, the, the audit period was 15 to 19. This is, this presentation's going to be on 2020 and then our goals for 2021. Uh, leading into this, um, we're going to do an overview of what, who we are and what services we provide. Um, and then, uh, we'll talk about performance, success stories and quantitative, uh, results. So first of all, uh, our mission is to provide effective and efficient, uh, representation to those charged with crimes in, in Utah County as we're appointed. Uh, within the scope of that, uh, we wanted to talk about what is indigent defense. Uh, the key takeaway here in, in the Utah code is, is that it's effective assistance of counsel. Um, the, the bedrock of our, our justice system is that every individual is entitled to fair representation. Uh, whether they're innocent or guilty, the key is that, that they have been afforded the opportunity to get a fair, uh, trial and, and our role in that is providing that defense. Uh, I'm going to let, uh, Josh talk a little bit about some of the legislative mandates that kind of drive our, uh, our, the background and, and drive our, um, existence.
I'll leave my mask on for the benefit of those here and, uh, those watching. Um, so like Ben said, um, we exist in part because of, um, a couple of things. One is the, uh, United States Constitution, uh, the Sixth Amendment, which provides a right to those accused of crime, uh, of criminal conduct to, uh, the assistance of counsel and to defend themselves against that. Um, in addition to that, uh, Article One, Section 12 of the Utah Constitution, uh, affords individuals that, the same right, uh, to counsel. Um, there was, uh, there are a couple of cases from the United States Supreme Court that are, um, There was, there are a couple of cases from the United States Supreme Court that are relevant to our existence. One is the nineteen sixty-three case by the title Gideon B. Wainwright. And that was a case wherein the Supreme Court made the decision that the guarantee to the right of counsel under the Sixth Amendment applied to the states. And then subsequently in nineteen seventy-two, that case that you see on the slide there, extended that to class A or to misdemeanor cases in which there was a potential for incarceration. So Gideon dealt with felonies. Argersinger, Evie Hamlin dealt with extending that to misdemeanors. And most states also, at this point in time, Utah included, extend that right to any, any case wherein there is a potential for incarceration as a potential consequence. Utah has also gone the step of codifying this right as indicated there. Utah Code seventy-eight B twenty-two is the Indigent Defense Act. And, and that's kind of where we exist. The, the Utah Association, our Public Defender Association was created in nineteen ninety-four. And as such, has been since that time, the contracted indigent defense service provider for the county. And so the Utah Code requires that each county provide indigent defense services. So those that are accused of a crime that can't afford their own attorneys, that, that they be afforded an attorney to help represent them. Some of the duties that we have as part of our charge are to provide representation to indigent, indigent defense defendants as appointed by the courts. That includes investigations, calling of experts, you know, trials, calling witnesses, scientific or medical testing, getting transcripts, briefs, motion writing, trials, various stages that are critical to a criminal prosecution, that we are to defend those individuals. And, you know, just for those that are unaware of public defenders, I think most people tend to have a, kind of a, the attitude of, well, what, you know, how do you do what you do? And I think that a lot of times, you know, our role is also to humanize individuals who, you know, have been accused of a crime. And, and I think the general initial reaction of, of citizens is, oh, you know, they're, they're, this person's a bad individual. I think that we're there to also humanize those individuals, make sure that they are heard and that they are provided an effective assistance of counsel.
So I'll go into our organizational chart, kind of the makeup. First of all, we have a board of directors with several individuals with extensive experience and backgrounds. Mike Peterson is the, is the president of the board, industry leader in, in, in Utah. Other members of the board include Chris Cannon, former US representative, Lori Faux, former state representative, Mike Petro, criminal justice attorney, Claudia Jarrett, San Pete County Commissioner. So we have a commissioner's perspective as we're discussing. And Brent, Brent Bolick, Justice Court Judge. So it's, it's a good array of experience and background in politics, in, in legal matters and in kind of in, in operational and, and business sense. So they've really been helpful as, as we've put our budget together. We've gone to them for advice and, and they've helped us to, to solidify it and ratify it. And, and they, they've approved the budget that we, we have sent to, to Rudy and to the commission to review. Members of management I already introduced, we're all here today, but it's Tom, Debbie, Josh and myself. And then the head count, I noticed in a lot of the other budget presentations, the departments were presenting their head counts. So this is our breakout. We divide it into, into two sections, the, the district representation and the juvenile representation. On the district side, we have twenty-three attorneys, six paralegals. On the juvenile side, eight attorneys, paralegal and also two social workers. And then just kind of admin and overhead, we have myself, the financial manager, Shelley, the office manager and three receptionists. Pending any questions on kind of how we're organized, what we do, we'll move on to performance in twenty twenty.
So Claudia, I don't think she ran for reelection, so I think she's done. Is it, is that a rotating one where you pick up another commissioner probably out of San Pete County?
We would be happy to take on another commissioner. That's just her background that, that she had lent to us. So she's, she's still on our board. But if, if a member of the commission is interested in serving on our board, we would be happy to take you.
Oh, yeah, I, I was just wondering about hers.
Oh, no, it's, it's not a locked in position.
Okay, I was just wondering if it was, if it was a commissioner out of San Pete County. I think we've looked at it and decided that probably best that we don't-
Yeah.
Have somebody from our commission on there-
Yeah.
Just for purposes of-
Conflicts of interest.
Conflicts, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, and totally understand. So, but yeah, if, if there is interest or as, as commissioners rotate off, you know, we, we appreciate the insight and the, the feedback that we get from that, having that level of experience.
I was just wondering if there was conversation with her or if she's going to stay on there afterwards?
She is planning on staying on.
Okay.
Okay, we will then move on to talking about our twenty twenty success stories. So the first, so the four, the four topics we're going to talk about for success stories are, are COVID response, our workload, our, the quality of our employees and some, some funding with IDC. First of all, COVID response. So, I mean, COVID was the elephant in the room for the year of, of, of game changing everything and how everything's done. Obviously that was a-
Left, yeah.
Huh?
It left?
It's, it's, you know, still rearing its head. But one thing that we've been able to do is able to adapt and, and adjust our operations quickly. Some key things to our success in handling COVID has been that we had a paperless office. So as the attorneys and the paralegals were working, they could pass documents back and forth with, with a seamless transition into teleworking. Also, we have web-based case management software, which allows our attorneys to, to collaborate remotely, but still provide the, the care or the representation needed to each client. As COVID was, was, was becoming more prevalent, one, one thing that we did is we decided to make a capital investment by purchasing Ring Central. That's been a, a key to us being able to continue to work with our clients in a remote environment. Just as an example, the impact it had. So all of our receptionists were exposed to COVID and all went into quarantine for a two week period. But because we had Ring Central onboard and had everybody trained on it, they were able to handle receptionist duties from home with no interruption to our operations. So it was a slight capital investment this year, but is lowering our, our ongoing expenses. So we'll see a cost savings and was, was critical to not interrupting operations during the year. And then Debbie's going to talk about it a little more, but we moved our continuing legal education to a, a remote environment, which allows everybody to participate from home. And we can get more participation, so a higher number of attorneys that are participating in the CLE without incurring any additional expenses. I'm going to turn it to Josh to talk about the workload.
So just kind of jumping off from a lot of those things that allowed us to continue to working. You know, courts transitioned with COVID to WebEx, court hearings, which is, you know, virtual. Some of the other, you know, issues that have come up from doing things that way that we've been able to try to, to navigate are, you know, it's difficult appearing in court with the inability to communicate with your client in, in any meaningful way. And so client communication, we've, you know, we've had to kind of, you know, spend a little bit more time. This has increased to the workload, you know, some to, to where we're, you know, having to continue cases if, you know, issues arise during court where we have to communicate to our clients, you know, a new maybe plea offer or maybe a question that they have that, you know, we're not standing right there. And so a lot more time is spent, has been spent going to the jails and, and otherwise trying to make contact with our clients there. I know we've also had, you know, at the beginning of COVID, more trips to the, to the prison to visit clients there. You know, some of the issues that have arisen from that is the prison has at times been locked down and, and so clients are inaccessible. So those are times, some of the things that we've been able to try to do. Ring Central, if you're not aware, is, is a, it's a Wi-Fi phone communication service. So it allows, you know, an app on a, on a cellphone that is tied to a work phone number. And so, you know, working from home, rather than having clients contact you on your cellphone, it comes through the app itself. You can also collaborate with other coworkers and colleagues through the app, share documents that way as well. And you can also text phone numbers through the app, which we've been able to use to try to keep contact with clients that are out of custody. So client communication issues that have arisen are not just those that are in custody, but also keeping track of clients that are out of custody. We've spent a lot of time also trying to help them get access to the court, the virtual court hearings. And, and we've been doing, I think, a, a, a pretty good job at doing that, you know, and, and absorbing that additional time that that takes. Another thing that we have looked at is case management assignments or case assignments. We've managed to try to improve efficiency that way. Some of the things that we've done is tried to create a, a team of attorneys to handle certain types of crimes that tend to be more time intensive. Trying in, you know, in one way to alleviate that time from the workloads or caseloads of, of the other attorneys that no longer have to, have to do those cases. And at the same time, increasing the, the quality of our attorneys that are handling those types of cases and their proficiency and expertise in that, in that regard. What we learned was, you know, we needed more attorneys to be able to make that actually be, you know, more effective. Some of the other things, thinking outside the box that we were trying to do with, with the resources that we had, and I think we did a good job this way is, you know, as the workload increases, our attorneys were attending two, two days a week in court, which is, you know, a full day, which significantly limited the out of court time that they had to prepare for those cases, prepare for trials, do those things like client communication, reviewing police reports, researching issues and writing motions, those types of things. And so we were able to try to, or to consolidate, you know, to where everybody is appearing one day a week in court. What we found with two days is, is, you know, prior to COVID, when we were kind of transitioning, that there was a lot of time in court spent waiting in line to call a case. And it just seemed pretty inefficient that way. And so now we've been able to open up an additional day of the week that people can go to the jail and do all these other things in preparation for their cases. One of the things that we've also seen, however, with COVID is, and the workload expanding, is our open cases, you know, we're, we're not, it doesn't seem like we are closing out cases as, as quickly. Part of that is in, is due to the issues with client communication, being able to, to convey, you know, offers and, and such to clients. And so, and, and also that, that conducting hearings via web, WebEx is, is pretty difficult and less effective than, you know, an in-person hearing, especially in terms of taking evidence and, and cross-examining witnesses. But our, our attorneys have done, you know, a, a decent job at trying to fulfill their professional responsibilities to each client, even in the face of such an increased workload. And one of those things is that we do have an increase in cases that are pending trial. You know, I, we surveyed the, the attorneys, the trial attorneys to see how many cases they had that were awaiting trial. I did this, I believe, the beginning of, of September. And then I updated it recently, within the past week. But since COVID has hit, the Supreme Court has essentially stayed all jury trials throughout the, at this point in time, throughout the, the rest of the year with the hopes of, you know, reopening courts for trials at some point next year, at some point unknown. And so the number of trials that our, our attorneys report are either, either have a date set and with the hopes that it will actually go forward. Or a case that is just waiting for the opportunity to have the courts be open to set a trial is at one hundred and ten. Obviously, we'll, we're, we're planning to discuss this a little bit later, but that, that number presents a difficulty moving forward into twenty twenty-one. But I think it's also indicative that our attorneys are trying to meet their constitutional mandate and not, not solely just pleading cases out, but trying to, you know, provide their clients with effective representation, challenging the evidence. And I think that's part of our role and we've been able to do that successfully.
So next I'm going to turn it over to Debbie. She's going to talk about, obviously, the, the key to our success is, is the, the value that the attorneys are bringing. And kind of, she's taken point on a lot of the continuing legal education. So she's going to share some success stories with, with employees.
So I wanted to begin with the extremely low turnover that we've had at our office over the years. I've been at the Utah County Public Defender Association a little over twenty years. And so I've seen it grow substantially since I started. And we, through that time, had a very low turnover in terms of losing our attorneys to other professions or other employment. Typically, we would lose an attorney to maybe private practice so they can earn more money. Or we've lost recently over the past few years and in the past, attorneys who have gone to the judiciary. As pointed out on here, we do have five that are being considered right now for judicial positions. So we're probably going to be filling another position shortly. But at any rate, I, I think the attorneys that are in our office have enjoyed working there. So we have a good group of people who are committed to the practice of indigent defense, criminal defense for the indigent client. Typically, when we hire someone in, we've got a really good training process in terms of hiring attorneys into our office. It, it, it takes a particular person who has an interest in doing public defender work. And usually that begins at the college level, you're in law school. We have good connections with the University of Utah, with BYU in terms of students interning with us. They clerk with us, there's a court rule that allows them to appear in court under the student practice rule, under the supervision of a practicing attorney. And so we've managed to get some really good qualified attorneys into our office through that program. So our students that, that we're able to bring in, right now we have three. We have one from Michigan, we have one from the Y, we have one from the University of Utah, have been just a great asset to us in terms of bringing in good attorneys who start that training process during their law school years. So that's basically gives you an idea of the, the, the staff at our office, the attorneys at our office, how they come in and those few that we have lost over the years. I want to focus on the CLE that is mentioned in the slide. I, I'm really proud of our CLE, in-house CLE that we offer. CLE is continuing legal education. There's a certain number of hours that are required of every attorney, every year, they have to report annually. So we have various sources of CLE. We have our in-house CLE that we offer on a monthly basis currently. I've been doing it probably every, you know, a couple every month because we're able to do it through WebEx or Zoom, some sort of video conferencing platform. We began our CLE years ago, it was another attorney at the office who had started it. I started doing it about three years ago. We usually hold ten to twelve CLEs per year in-house and these CLEs are free. Because our office over the years have developed really strong contacts with some of the leading groups that do criminal defense in our state, that would be the Indigent Defense Commission, the Utah Association of Criminal Defense Lawyers and also Legal Defenders Association. Because of those strong connections, we've been able to bring in highly qualified, experienced attorneys to come in and teach our attorneys in certain areas that we practice in. Criminal defense is a specialization. We deal with a lot of violent offenses, more simple possession offenses, Fourth Amendment issues, Sixth Amendment issues, several issues, and we can bring in attorneys that are specialized in those areas and they're willing to come in and teach our attorneys for free. And so I'm very grateful for those connections that we have at our office in terms of training. In two thousand nineteen, the IDC had joined us in terms of our CLE program. And they had given me a list of attorneys to include in my, you know, current list of attorneys I was sending out notice to. And so that was a really good relationship with the IDC. They now are doing their own CLE. I'm on their committee, their CLE committee in terms of preparing what CLE is appropriate. what CLE is appropriate, what is the best type of training that is needed for the attorneys as a whole in the state of Utah. And so we have maintained a very good relationship with the Indigent Defense Commission. I think we began that relationship in its inception. Tom was working with them right when they started. And so we've continued to, to develop that relationship and benefit in terms of training. And again, LDA, I had mentioned our connection with them. We're developing that also in the future. LDA last week came in and did a CLE for us regarding House Bill 206 and all of the pre-trial service changes, bail reform changes. And so I contacted them, and within a day's time, they were ready to present information on that. So again, we, we really have a good connection with these groups that have provided really exceptional CLE for us. Our attorneys on top of it, though, they do attend all the IDC training that's available. We also train the Utah Association of Criminal Defense Lawyer training that is also made available to us. Another thing that we have at our office, we have attorneys who are involved in some of the committees throughout the state. We have the Utah Supreme Court Advisory Committees, both the rules of criminal procedure and also the rules of evidence. We have attorneys who participate in those committees. That is very helpful for us, because the Utah Rules of Criminal Procedure and also the Utah Rules of Evidence are something that our attorneys need to keep up to date on. And so having attorneys involved in those committees has been very helpful for us in terms of us being able to provide quality services to our clients. And then finally, we have another individual at the office who is involved in the sentencing commission. He's on the Utah Sentencing Commission and keeps us updated as to any changes that are happening in sentencing with criminal defense. So I just wanted to speak to those points, and then I'm going to give it back to Ben.
So one question about turnover. This is great. It's, I really appreciate this overview so far, and it's helpful to understand your department. We just had our HR director in here talking about the county departments and turnover. And generally speaking, you know, he was saying how turnover is, low turnover is generally very positive trend. However, there are some bands to that, right? Because in one case, you, you want to make sure that those who are rising in responsibility for, in your organization, for example, maybe not, there's not as many roles up there for senior attorneys or experienced attorneys. Maybe there is. So that's one reason, but there's a natural kind of narrowing. But also just, generally speaking, if you do surveys of high-performing organizations, you're never going to get 100% right. And so just making sure that you're managing to, performance and productivity would necessitate, you know, some involuntary turnover.
Right.
And so, I don't know, just any comments on, on how you have managed that? Because again, I think from a retention, from a culture, this is a real positive sign, as long as you maybe can comment about just about how you're making sure to, that you're trying to keep high employee productivity as well.
Okay. And I, I see what you're saying. In terms of, you know, we've had low, low turnover, and when it's been someone who's left the office, they've done it voluntarily. And so, you know, if, if we have an individual who's not performing where we want them to be performing, then we talk to that individual, we get to the bottom of what the issues may be. And, and I hope I'm answering your question, if that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, and so, and to speak to that, is that something that you have to do much? Have you had to have involuntary exits, or how does that?
And I've got to think, because it's been, I don't, I can't think of, in terms of an attorney, an involuntary termination of an, of an attorney. We, if there's issues in, and honestly, to go way back, I think it has to do with our hiring practice. We have individuals, I believe we have individuals that are very committed to this work. And so if I'm in court and I'm not doing a good job, the last concern I have is, is Tom and me being terminated. What's going through my head is this individual has a Sixth Amendment right to counsel. What am I doing? I need to make sure I'm preserving that. So I think that the attorneys that we bring in, we make sure that they are committed to this practice. So I think that's the primary thing they're thinking of. This person is entitled to a quality defense. We need to make sure we're doing that. Now, if there's an attorney that might be having some issues, they can always come to me and Tom and Josh, we can discuss it. And then look if there's any training issues or anything like that. And a lot of times, the attorneys tell me, Debbie, you know, I want to know more about this particular topic, or what happened with House Bill 206. The bail reform was huge. And so we've actually had two CLEs. Josh set up one with Kisa Williams, and then we had the one that was set up with LDA. So if we do have someone that isn't performing where they need to be, we will talk to that individual. But we've never, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know that we've ever terminated an attorney. Three.
It's been over 10 years.
It's been over 10 years. Okay, so I apologize. I apologize. I apologize for my, can't think of, well, okay, on the district court side? Okay, I'm on the district court side, so I was not aware of the three. But on the district court side, in terms of our training and that, that, that's the answer I could give you, because we really do. And that's what's so nice about targeting those students. Once they're in law school and they're interested in doing this, the connections we have with the Y and the U, they come into our office, they're practicing under that rule, the court rule that allows them to, under our supervision, and then a lot of times, we're able to bring them on. So we know this individual means it. They want to do this work. So I hope that helps to answer it.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
One other thing, just to piggyback off of that. The problem is, we're too good at training attorneys. So the judge position that's being considered, there's two slots open, there are seven candidates, and five of them are from our office. So we, we just really have the, the highest quality of attorneys, and it's, it's, it's really attributed to that training and that culture of, of being passionate about the work that we do. So. Moving on, the last topic on success stories that we wanted to share was the IDC. So obviously, we acknowledge that the county's budget is limited. If there were unlimited funds, it would solve all our problems, but that's not the fiscal reality. So one thing we've done is we brought in the Indigent Defense Commission to help match Utah County funding. So for every dollar that Utah County spends, the total expenditure is $1.32 because of the IDC funding match, which means that Utah County is, is getting services for 75% of, of the cost that, that are actually incurred. So. Moving on, we want to talk next about some of the statistics and, and data-driven reporting for 2020. The first piece of that is caseload. Josh is going to talk about kind of caseload and trends that we've seen, where we're at so far this year.
Just briefly, Debbie forgot that we also have three sitting judges that came through our office. And, and, and just, caseloads is an interesting topic, too, because some of the times that we have had to discuss with attorneys, you know, maybe some, some issues, it's, it seems to be related to workload and being able to try to manage as, as many cases as we do have. But, you know, the, the caseload, this is an odd year to, to report on caseload and statistics that way. We touched on that a little bit a couple days ago. I think that there are certain trends that do appear in, in the data that, that I've been looking at. Some case types have seemed to be on an upward trend. Some of those are person-related crimes. The felony DUIs seem higher than, than in times past. Rather than just reporting on a particular number, I thought it was, it would be a little bit more informative to focus on looking at the number of open cases currently and what that translates to, you know, and what number that translates to on an individual attorney basis. And, and so I had prepared, I had looked at how many cases we had opened yesterday, and then I updated that this morning. And it, taking that into consideration with how many attorneys we do have at any given time now, a snapshot would be that our attorneys are handling roughly 120 cases, you know, that are open and actively being worked on. And so, you know, that's, those are the cases that are, they're handling in court, that they're doing research on, that they're trying to visit, those clients. I do handle a caseload as well. And I can attest that, that some of the difficulty in doing that is, you know, when you have 120 cases and you come in, you have those cases at various stages. So, you know, at my desk, I have, there's at least five binders of discovery for a case that's waiting for trial. And I, and although I have intentions to get into that every, every day, sometimes what, what's more pressing is clients that are in custody or clients that are on the calendar for the next week. And so you, you have to make this judgment call of where you're going to start devoting your time. And that can, that can lead to some issues with, you know, clients that may feel like they're not getting the time and dedication that they, that they may, maybe deserve. And one of the other things, talking about caseloads, we used the term previously workload, and I think that that's probably a better transition in moving forward, rather than talking about caseload, actually quantifying what that, what work that, that entails, you know, and, and, and trying to assign that a time. And Ben will talk later a little bit about that. But that is assigning a time on certain tasks that are within the attorney's control, such as, you know, research and writing client communication, those types of things. The way we currently report caseloads as well fails to take into consideration the fact that many, many cases have multiple charges. And so what we, how we kind of count and report is just the highest charge or the highest level offense in a particular charging document. It's called an information. So that has the charges that, that are, are being pursued. We just look for the one that has the highest penalty and is the highest level, and we count it as that. But the majority of the time, there are other charges within that document, and some of which may be additional felonies. And, and so what we want to try to do going forward is to take that into consideration, because that also adds to the amount of time and the workload that we're requiring our attorneys to, to produce. That way, you know, going forward, we can track not only how many charges of a particular type we have, but then, you know, using industry standards and studies. There's one that should be coming out next year that we helped participate in, that the IDC was looking into, which is similar to one that was done by the American Bar Association in Missouri, which looked at what amount of time would be required to provide effective assistance of counsel, which is the, you know, that's the, the goal here is effective assistance of counsel. What amount of time is required to reach that threshold in any particular type of case? And, you know, there have been some guidance that's been given by those ABA, that ABA study. Also, the state of Michigan and the state of Texas did similar studies. I spoke with the IDC today about when our study would be published for the state of Utah. That's been extended due to COVID through the end of the year. So hopefully next year we'll get that. What we've done, though, is, or what we try to do is, is use those studies that are out there to quantify the time for each particular case that we have. And then that's a better metric, I believe, going forward to, to address, you know, what our needs are, both internally and as we report to the commission, how we're, how we're doing and what our needs are going forward. I think that's a, better than just a, a particular number of the type of cases. And as I, as I indicated before, the other things caseload-wise that we're currently looking at is that cases tend to be hanging on longer, and, and that the stay on trials has kind of added additional, an additional pressure. And we'll talk on that a little bit later as well, unless there's, are there questions that you have at this point?
So what is the yellow shading?
Well, that would just show where we anticipate a projected.
For the full calendar year.
For the full calendar year, correct.
The blue, it kind of phases in, but you're saying kind of where the blue ends is where you're at year-to-date?
Yeah, so we're a little bit lower. I mean, we've talked about it. It's not, it doesn't seem like we're as low as maybe I anticipated. Additionally, what's, what's interesting is, at the start of COVID, there were a lot of people that, you know, the jail, I don't know if they talked about this in their presentation, but to address, you know, the potential outbreak in the jail, they kind of reduced their, the, the types of offenses that they would hold people on. And so a lot of people would get booked and then released. And so charges would come in the form of a summons. You know, if, if someone's arrested and then they're booked and held in jail, then there are timeframes by which they have to be charged and go to court. And so those are ones that we get appointed on early on. If someone's booked and then released, and there's a summons, they're given a date in the future to come back and come back to what's called an initial appearance, which is the, the time or the, the hearing wherein they request appointment of counsel. And so I, I have personally seen on calendar days and on felony first calendar days or initial appearance calendars, that there are more people in that category. So they're starting to trickle in a little bit. Third quarter was higher than, than second quarter. It's a trending back up, upward. And I think that, you know, we, we should see a lot more of those coming through toward the end of the year, because I know a lot of them were given, you know, November dates and things like that to report to the court.
So what are the two numbers, then, precisely?
So Ben did the slide.
No, I got it. No, you're good. Okay, so 5738, that's the number of actual trials, or number of actual cases that we've been appointed on through September 30th, through Q3. And then we're projecting, based on the trends that we're seeing, we did a regression analysis of 6225 as what we project it to be by the end of the year.
Great. That's really helpful. Thanks.
Okay. Second quantitative piece, we just wanted to dive into some financial highlights. First is, based on Q3, those 5,000 cases and our costs through the end of Q3, the cost per case is $875.01, which is a bargain if you compare that to civil course, civil attorney. But we, we've really done a lot to try to manage our costs, keep it down as low as possible. And so that's, we, we feel a really, a really successful number and demonstrates a bargain that the county's getting. The second thing, as a not-for-profit, they're 501(c)(3) entity. There, there are three classifications of expenses: program expenses, general administrative expenses, and fundraising expenses. Industry standard is generally you want fundraising expenses to be less than 5%. Administrative expenses to be between 10 and 15, which leaves, you know, between 15 and, and 20% total there for 80% to program. But we've really cut down. We have no fundraising costs, and our administrative costs are only 5.7% of our total expenses, well below the industry standard, which means each dollar that we receive is going that much further into program expenses. The third highlight is revenue diversity. Obviously, with Utah County being our primary source of revenue, but as we've tried to source other revenues so that we lighten that load on the county, with the IDC funding, Utah County is only paying for 75% of the services that it's receiving. The other is supplemented by the IDC.
Can I comment on this one?
Absolutely.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure that we've seen it this way.
Okay.
That, like, the public defender's office is going and getting additional revenue. I mean, a lot of that passes through the county, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I know that your office works on the Hill, but so does the county in, in sourcing that. And then also, a lot of it comes for the benefit of other jurisdictions. And so I love this principle here, but I just, I'm not sure we, but correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure we've seen that as necessarily the public defender's office, like, really hustling to go get matching dollars. It's kind of, we, we all have to work, you know, kind of for that.
I, I, I completely agree that it's a team effort. And, and we have one of our employees that's on the board of the IDC, which has advocated a lot for pushing those funds to Utah County. And this 24.6%, that's just the Utah County portion of IDC, not the funding we get from other counties. Those fundings are accounted for separately and reported separately. This is just the, the Utah County portion of it.
Okay, that's helpful.
And then finally, budget utilization, as of the end of Q3, we're at 80.07% budget utilization. There's some front-loaded costs in the beginning of Q1 for annual things like insurance and that, that basically being at 80% is right on track for full budget utilization by the end of the year. Then we will move on to some cost savings. We met with Commissioner Ivy and Kyle yesterday, and they wanted us to make sure that we included this in, in our discussion as we went into detail on our budget request for last year to this year. So first of all, in our case-related expenses, rather than taking a budget and then adding for increases for our request, instead for each of the case-related expenses, we did a five-year analysis and said, what did we actually spend? And so any of those areas where we had budgeted too high, in our new proposed budget, we reduced those. And that included JV experts. And that included JV experts, transcripts, juvenile uh, investigations. Those areas we've been able to bring our budget requests down, which kind of helps to uh, to make a more reasonable and, and closer to reality request. Uh, the second thing is we've made some operational changes that have resulted in savings. Um, as Debbie mentioned, the, this um, networking that they have with their, their CLE and doing that in-house over Webex, uh, means that we're, we're forecasting less expenditure on training in CLE. And we're reducing that budget request by eleven thousand five hundred. And the, the Ring Central that we, we purchased is, was a one-time capital expense, but has no ongoing. So we've reduced our budget, our telephone expense by eight thousand dollars. We've also uh, looked at our general and administrative, obviously as a not-for-profit. One of our key metrics is what percentage of our expenses are program-related. And our goal is to, to reduce GNA by twenty percent. That'll make it, that'll bring it down to five percent of our total budget. Uh, which is a hundred and eight thousand dollar reduction. Part of that is we've negotiated better rates on our insurance. Uh, part of that is uh, by teleworking, we're reducing our office expenses. Um, we also upgraded our server and did some other capital improvements that are gonna require less ongoing maintenance. So our computer maintenance expense is going down. Uh, and that's kind of the savings that we're seeing there in the forty-one thousand and the nine thousand compared to our budget for twenty twenty. Pending any questions on these? Uh, obviously, the, the priority of, of finding those budget savings are because we're gonna have a big ask for next year. Uh, our performance measure, the number one highest priority is we want to make sure that our attorneys are taken care of, that they have appropriate workloads. Our second priority is improved transparency, both in our reporting and in the integrity of our data. And then we just want to make sure that we're addressing that backlog of cases. So within appropriate workloads, uh, as we mentioned earlier, the caseload uh, year-to-date through September is five thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight. Uh, we project that going up to six thousand two hundred and twenty-seven through Q four. And uh, as Josh alluded to earlier, we took each one of those cases and we said, well, a show for cause based on industry standards should only take this many hours to complete, to provide appropriate uh, uh, counsel. A felony should take this many hours and a misdemeanor should take this many hours. Uh, and I've got that data if we want to dive into it. But just at a high level, we took all of those cases, multiplied it by the hours it should take. Uh, so through Q three, that should be fifty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-three hours. Extrapolating through the end of the year to seventy-eight uh, thousand, uh, seventy-one hours. And if we take our current number of attorneys, that's a per attorney at number of hours expected to perform uh, the caseload that we're uh, actually executing of uh, two thousand eight hundred and ninety-two, which is about fifty-five uh, hours per attorney per week. Uh, our goal for next year is to get that below fifty hours per attorney per week. Uh, and so by increasing by four attorneys, that will bring that to forty-eight point four three. Uh, the total cost of this is uh, four hundred and forty thousand. That's specifically for those four attorneys that we're asking. But I've also rolled into that the cost of adding four interns and four uh, social workers. Um, the county has funded social workers that work on the juvenile side. We've seen significant improvement, both in the quality uh, of the defense and in the long-term rehabilitation of the clients that we're serving. Uh, so we'd like to ask to extend that uh, to the district as well. Cause we think that it will improve the ability of the um, attorneys to handle more co, cases because their time won't be spent doing social work. We'll be able to do that with more efficient dollars of a social worker salary versus an attorney salary. As well as uh, an improved um, level of expertise on the social work that's being done.
So Ben, a couple of questions. I, I appreciate that you're, cause we've had this discussion on where's a show cause and you know, the different timeframes that are out there. And I'm, I am curious at, at seeing those, maybe not now.
I can email it over to you.
But yeah. Later, um, in, in looking at the, the, the hours per attorney that two thousand eight hundred and ninety-two currently that you have there, uh, versus where you'd like to be at two thousand five hundred and eighteen. How does that compare? How, 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 I mean, how's that compare, uh, you know, across the nation, across other counties?
So I will, I, the only one that I have data on is the LDA, Salt Lake County. And we're almost a hundred and seventy-five percent of theirs, not quite double theirs, but a hundred and seventy-five percent of their caseload. So significantly higher than, than, than average according to theirs. I can grab uh, some more data across other counties. That was the only comparison that I had on hand.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on?
I mean, I don't have a que- If you want some feedback, I mean, normally what we've been doing is the twenty twenty overview in these meetings, right?
Yep.
And we haven't been going through the new requests. I mean, people give previews of why they're asking for it and justify exactly like you've just done. And then we haven't really used these meetings to kind of go through and talk about that.
Exactly.
But I, I, I really appreciate, I, I think you've laid out the twenty twenty exactly, it's really helpful to see it that way, like the other departments have done. So, and then, do you have more still?
Yeah, I just have, have two really quick. Um, improved transparency, obviously there's no cost to this, but with, with my position being added, uh, we want to improve the financial transparency, uh, which will be providing quarterly reports to the commission. Uh, quarterly financial statements to the commission. Uh, also, I mean, we're happy to provide additional details as requested. Uh, and then we're also going to migrate to Data Defender, which will allow a better tracking of hours. Uh, as the attorneys are able to log their hours into the system. As well as, uh, as Josh mentioned, when there's multiple charges, that data will be gathered uh, in the system. Uh, and just allow a better quality of reporting that we're do, giving for the case data that we report quarterly to the commission.
Yeah, cause then we have a lot more, when we're talking about where's show cause or whatever the case is, we can have actuals set up projected.
Yep. And, and, and Josh spent, spent a lot of time breaking that out for this presentation. Uh, when we move to Data Defender, which, which will, will do in January, uh, that'll allow all of that to be automated. So it'll save a lot of time on our side as well as, as funding. Because Data Defender, there's a cost savings as well versus the case management software we're using now. Which is reflected in our budget, so. Uh, and finally, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Josh to discuss that backlog and our recommendation to the council that they be aware of it and, and the impact that it's gonna have.
Just quickly, Defender Data is also a program that's pushed by the IDC. And so in part, us migrating to that not only gives us the ability to track hours and you know, numbers of charges, give a case weight, you know? Um, it also allows us to speak the same language that this, that the IDC is going to be using throughout the state. And so it will be standardized. So when we talk about orders to show cause, not only will you have our data, but also it should, in, in, over time, um, be able to be compared to data throughout the state. Um, which I think adds some reliability as well. Uh, the, the hourly numbers that we've talked about before were based off of the, an American Bar Association study uh, where they broke down, uh, kind of doing a similar methodology that we did in, with the IDC here. But part of that is to keep that relationship going, uh, going forward, so we can continue to get that funding. Um, one of the things that we're, we're looking for as far as goals, uh, performance measures going forward would be this, you know, we're, we're for, as we talked about before, we have this tidal wave of cases, um, which are set, is set to make land. Uh, you know, at some point next year, it's unknown at what point in time. I have heard some judges refer to the middle toward the end of the year, uh, which uh, is concerning as well because that number of a hundred and ten cases waiting for trials will just go up again, you know? And so, uh, one thing that we uh, would be looking for is, you know, when, when you're in a trial, it takes, it's on a non calendary day. So you have your regular court calendary day. Uh, that is in front of the specific judge and then you set a trial date and that trial date's on a different day, it's not a calendary day. And you know, aside from the preparation for that trial, you're in that courtroom, in that trial. Uh, you know, most of the time from like seven-thirty in the morning until really late at night, cause you're preparing for the following days. Um, the problem with that is that as you're doing that, you're getting new cases. And you also have cases that are set for the following week's calendar. And so it takes away some of your ability uh, to hit and address those other workload factors like visiting your clients, talking and reviewing those, that discovery. And so, uh, you know, if you have, uh, you know, and trials can go anywhere from one day to multiple weeks, some even longer. And so the longer that you're away from that, the more it just continues to build up. And so, uh, one of the things that we're, we're trying to consider is, is a performance measure or a goal to be able to address those. As the slides uh, indicates, one of the things that we would be looking to potentially do would be having some sort of a reserve. In case we, you know, when we get there, we can look and address the need at that time. And uh, those are there, but uh, only if we need them. And so those are some of the things that we're kind of looking at, at trying to navigate this uh, unusual circumstance.
Sounds like the perfect spot for the IDC to jump into.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, that, we still need to talk with them. Yeah, certainly, um, we'll, we'll take whatever help we can, but uh, we're gonna need it.
Is there any, when you think about that, when you think of a wave of cases kind of coming through, um, which obviously does have a nexus to COVID nineteen.
Sure.
And the delay. Is that, when you manage through that, is there a temporary spike that is better addressed with some staff that are only kind of there to pitch in during that time? And you may not need them on a long-term basis? Or is it better for you to staff up because you think you'll have that need consistently after that? How do you view that?
Well, I mean, without knowing the timeframe that they're gonna open up the courts, it's difficult to really answer that question adequately. Um, I think one way to look at it, just thinking from a logistical standpoint with the court's ability to handle, uh, you know, they're, they're kind of limited on courtrooms, uh, number one and, and judges, you know, uh, to handle the trials. And so I think that, you know, as, and, and maybe the hundred and ten, I don't know that all of those end up at trial. I, I assume at this point that that's, that's the case. Um, but it would be a long time to get through that backlog. So I think that we're, what we're looking at is, is more than just a, you know, a, maybe, you know, six-month uh, you know, need or maybe even a year need. It might be uh, longer than that just because of the logistics in doing this. And, and, and not knowing, you know, if it, if they don't open them up until Ju-, you know, July next year, we're gonna have a whole other number to, you know, to try to deal with. Um, the other thing that's interesting and, and I don't know, you know, how that translates, uh, but uh, the county attorney has, had changed a policy right before COVID, uh, indicating an increase in trials, uh, would be really difficult to distinguish, you know, uh, which, whether or not that has some, uh, you know, effect on, on this number here. Certainly that would be something that once it's opened up, we could then uh, reassess and look and see if trial, you know, trial backlog continues uh, as a result of, of that policy. Uh, in which case, obviously, it's not gonna be just a temporary uh, need, it would be a, a more long-term need.
It'll be interesting to me, cause they're, they're, they're coming in tomorrow.
Sure.
Be interesting to see how they, how they look at it as well.
Yeah.
Cause they have the same thing. And the judges do too. I mean, they only have so many, like you said, so many courts, so many days.
Yeah.
Kind of too, unless they're putting extra time in, which I, I doubt that's gonna happen.
On the two judges, for instance, just for example, the two judges I appear in front of are very limited because they also handle a municipal calendar. And so of any given month, they only have two weeks available for trial, uh, which obviously is problematic. Um, and, and while there are uh, empty courtrooms uh, here in Provo that would be able to be used, using senior judges, that's something that's been done before, is having a senior judge come and, and uh, be the judge, sit on a trial. Um, that, that is limited as well, just because there's only so many courtrooms. So that's one thing, we're trying right now to prepare, uh, to be able to meet it so that we're not at that point in time, you know, scrambling to, to say, hey, we need, we need to, we need to take care of this somehow. So we're just bringing that on the radar right now, so.
So those are our performance measures for twenty twenty-one. Uh, and that was kind of an overview of, of twenty twenty, kind of our, our, our high successes are, are the ability to overcome the COVID. And uh, the, the quality of the services that our attorneys are providing uh, in, in reacting to, to that. And continuing to manage it at, um, you know, a, a fiscally responsible way to minimize our costs, so. Uh, pending any other questions, that, that concludes.
So just one guy, just to give you a, just a little bit of um, thought on just where one person on this commission is. First of all, I'm really appreciative of this. This is exactly what we asked you guys to do. You've done it, you're tracking the data. Um, I think this makes the process way smoother. Um, focusing on data and how important it is, and I think we really will, certainly I will rely on that in making decisions. If you could go back to your slide, it shows the cases on a year-by-year basis and the cases per attorney.
Five-year or?
Yep, no, the, the bar chart.
It's easier to do with a mouse than with a clicker.
So, right here, my recollection of some of the conversations we had. And obviously, none of us can predict the world, especially in twenty twenty.
Yep.
But there were comments being made publicly, not even necessarily by people in the office, but a lot of people who are concerned about this issue. And about this fact that if we didn't do something dramatic, and, and there was an increase ultimately in twenty twenty in the contract, but if we didn't do some, something way bigger than what we had done, that there was gonna be this major disconnect and that this ratio is gonna go up. And I, I don't really feel like when, when we raise questions like, well, we don't know if caseload is going up. We don't know what's going to happen with those new prosecutors. We don't know if those prosecutors are gonna be in the courtroom or whether they're screening cases and we need to follow data. That was not viewed as a rational thought. And in actuality, the cases and the cases per attorney went down in twenty twenty. And so.
Well, I mean, yes.
Well, they did.
Yes.
It was a, no, none of us thought this is how it worked. Like maybe, maybe that wasn't a rational thought if this wasn't going to happen. But I, there was enough uncertainty in how this was going to play out, even in a normal year with so many changes happening in the county attorney's office, that we thought this could possibly happen. And so I appreciate your reporting it. I appreciate you reporting it fairly and transparently. And I have no desire to, um, you know, use that against the funding requests. I think your office needs to be staffed appropriately. In fact, if anything, I, I appreciate the forward-looking part of the reserve request and looking that there is this caseload going forward. At present, it's just hard in this year. Cause this year you did not see that huge overload of cases that was predicted. But my sense is, what you're saying is, those same dynamics that predicted that higher caseload in twenty twenty still exists for future years.
Yeah, and as soon as the court's back in session, that'll.
Right, although as Josh just alluded to, some of the reforms that are happening in county attorney, there's still some uncertainty. And so I think that, that remains, just for one guy here, the posture on this is we have to track the data. Um, you off, you do a great job at, at offering a critical uh, service and a constitutional right to folks. And so I wanna look at it, but this, this is really helpful in, in helping us reach those decisions.
And, and I think that one thing that isn't captured in this data is the types of cases. Um, particularly with COVID, we've seen an increase in more sensitive and time-intensive cases. Uh, which is, which is why I think it was more appropriate to look at it by case hours of what was most appropriate. Obviously, orders to show cause, we can do ten thousand of them, but it's not gonna require as much time as, you know, one capital case, one homicide case.
Well, and then certainly there's the same thing, a projection that more would go to trial, but we've yet to see that. Again, we know twenty twenty is a weird year, but it's still to be determined how that will play out.
Exactly.
And then on the types of cases, I would say, to me, that's, that's rational, it's reasonable. But I would say the burden kind of remains on, and you guys have made great improvements in the way that you're showing this presentation. So I'm confident that you'll continue to be able to do that. But I didn't necessarily see it all broken down in here about types of cases and types of hours. And so if that's something that you feel justifies the story, I, I'm personally more than happy to continue looking at that.
Okay.
So anyway, I didn't wanna jump into this and I'm not, I'm not actually trying to give you any guidance on what would be approved or not. I just wanted to share my perspective of how I'm, I'm thinking about this. I just wanted to share my perspective of how I'm, I'm thinking about this.
No, no, I, I appreciate that. And, and, and we'll get that data broken down by type, just so that you guys have a chance to review it. Because I think, I think it's a, a consideration definitely for, for the budget season, so we'll get that into you.
Thanks.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to our last item for work session discussion, which is a social media policy.
You're not gonna state.
Commissioners, this is Ben Ven.
Go ahead, Ben.
Sorry, this is Ben Ven with Utah County Attorney's Office. You, you've had been sent to the social media policies or the proposed policies, drafts really previously. If there's any questions about the, the necessity of this policy or why we're doing it now or any specifics, you know, about the background, I'm here to answer questions. If you'd like to jump into the nuts and bolts of it, or specific questions or concerns you have with the proposed policy, please let me know. So I, I guess I'll turn it to, to you for any questions or comments or concerns.
Ben, for me, will you just kind of go through number six on the records section of this? And, 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 and explain, you know, how this is gonna be, how, how we're gonna keep these records? We've always had these discussions about, you know, how long and we don't, we don't necessarily have a records retention policy that we've adopted as a county, but we have leaned to the state's retention policy and that becomes the de facto policy that we have. So would you just kind of talk about these records, where they're gonna be stored, how they're gonna be stored? Kind of what's, what's the thought process with them and then some of the additional stuff that you have in there?
You bet. You're, you're correct. The, the county mostly relies on the state's records retention schedule. I, I believe there's a few specific items that the county does have some specific retention policies. I, I, I know that the health department, for example, they have a software that they use, they pay for it, that retains the social media posts, comments, et cetera. So that is something that has been affected for them. I'm not sure of the cost on that, but under grandma, they are records. And the, the content of the social media posts governs the retention schedule. It's kind of a, a nuanced area of, of, of the law, state code. We can't just say, oh, this is social media, retain it for five years, period. It's not that easy. It, it does take more of a harder look at the content of, of the, of the, of the post or the comment. That's something that, you know, my, my office together with the county records officer can look at. So it's kind of a.
Will you look at that? Because I'm, I'm looking at it and it says, you know, the records office in accordance with the applicable retention schedules. I'd like to see those retention schedules that, that we're referring to there, especially when we're talking about these types of records, because you have here for a minimum of three years. And, and I, I'm, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if that is our retention schedule or if that is state's retention policy.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I'd be happy to look into that. Again, it, it's hard to project what content will be produced by county's social media sites. That being said, I think we can generalize and, and from that, find the applicable retention schedules. As for the three-years suggestion there, it is just a suggestion. That's not explicitly stated in state, state record retention schedule. That was kind of a baseline. This, this, this policy was kind of cobbled together based off of Salt Lake's, some other jurisdictions. That was a suggestion in, in one of those jurisdictions. So that was kind of a, a baseline, but it's definitely open to negotiation or, or consideration, depending on, on what the, you, the commission would like to see.
Okay, again, for me, I, I would just, I, you know, I, I would like to see that's, the, the schedule that's kind of referred there if we're following, following that schedule and what might be different in the county. And then it would give me a better understanding of if we're gonna start writing this into policies for us. Give me a, give me a better idea of what we're looking at is all, is all I'm trying to do with it.
True, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Ben, as I look at this, I, I see some potential challenges with a policy like this. So I guess I do kind of go back to what are we trying to accomplish? Let me just give you an example of a couple of the challenges I see, which, you know, maybe we can navigate, but it's, so F, two F kind of talks about essentially that any board, any media accounts associated with a multi-member board requires approval. Right now, as a commission, we've kind of dealt with this issue in the past. And I think we kind of concluded that, you know, right now, we don't all approve every time the PIO puts out a employee of the month post. And there's little things like that that just need to happen. So that would be a real easy exception to this. But at the same time, maybe it wouldn't be the easiest exception to draft because I, I think we also view that at some point it rises to a threshold where it kind of, it should be a majority of the, of the commission. And so I think there's some details to work out there, Ben. The other one that's interesting for me is when it comes to personal accounts versus government accounts versus personal business and government business, those are, those are gray areas to me. It may seem like there's bright lines, but as I think of, I'm just trying to think of any recent examples, there was a senator, right? So one of our senators published on his Twitter account that he intended to move forward and support the Supreme Court nomination of Amy Coney Barrett. And on his Twitter account, put out a statement from his office. Now, is that government business or is that personal business? Is that a personal opinion? Because.
Sure.
There's no vote being taken, but it certainly had to do with official votes being taken by the Senate. Not to mention the President of the United States, we could go down a big rabbit hole if we start analyzing his Twitter feed. But there is, I, I don't know how to interpret this. And so I, I guess on both of those areas, I, I would not want to create a situation where our, our existing ordinary day-to-day use would trip up anything in this policy.
Yeah, valid concerns in taking that one first. This policy would not be applicable to elected officials on their personal accounts, whether that be the official county range commission account, commissioner account or, or the county range personal account, this would not apply to that. There's, but you're, you're right. Social media is a nascent area of law. There's not a lot of established precedent that the courts have, have put out for us, which is, is one reason why my office wanted to take a hard look at this. We saw some risk going to your point of kind of the broader of why we're doing this. So this was really a risk management sort of policy in order to keep us, the, the county safe from doing something that could violate citizens' First Amendment rights. So you're right, it, it's gray, but it just wouldn't apply.
Well, when you say it doesn't apply, I'm, I'm looking at two Q. And that does, and that, so both of my examples of the gray area between personal and government, I felt like were picked up in two Q.
And, and, okay, looking at the definition, so official county social media accounts. And maybe that's something that we can clarify in, in a definition section. When, when it says an official county account, that would refer to, for example, the Utah County Sheriff's Office account, Utah County government account, Utah County Health Department account. But when it's, when it's the Nathan Ivy, Utah County Commissioner account, that falls outside of the scope of this. So maybe that's something that we can clarify in, in, you know, in the definitions.
Will you also just talk a little bit about the, the disclaimers that you have on number eight?
Sure, and this, this section was taken from those other jurisdictions. It, it's really just the, the, the fine print, the legal portion of, of this. You know, disclaiming for the public's sake that county communications are gonna make no warranty express or otherwise. For example, in being near neither the county nor its local officials or other departments, divisions, commissions or boards can guarantee the completeness or the accuracy of information posted. So it's just kind of the, the CYA on, on the, on the legal part that we feel necessary for policy like this.
So, so I guess my question comes in that we're talking about, you know, the county, the social media platforms that the county owns and has and controls. But it also includes, it also includes an elected officials, you know, the, that's controlled by an elected official. Are you talking about on a private basis as well?
No, no, and, and you're, help me see where you're, you're reading out, A, A?
A has, you know, about the three lines down, including those owned and controlled by an elected official in his or her official capacity. And so.
And it says specifically are not, aren't monitored regularly.
Yeah, and they're monitored regularly.
Or are.
Public uses should not use.
I guess it was neither, so it's saying that they aren't monitored regularly. Again, that's kind of a disclaimer, saying if, if citizens, you know, desire to communicate with the county via social media, there's no guarantee that this is something that's monitored 24/7 or that could be used as an outlet for an emergency circum, circumstance. If there's something, if you go down further, it talks about dangerous conditions. So that's, that's what that is intended to cover. I, I think leaving in the, the individual elected officials cited in this portion is necessary as a, in order to cover elected officials from potential complaints or lawsuits and saying, well, hey, I, I tweeted to you about this, this dangerous situation going down, you know, a mass gathering of a party. I tweeted Tanner Range and, and, or Bill Lee and, and he didn't respond. And, and, and so that's, that's what that would cover.
Yeah, so I, like, there's some things to work out, but, but when you use examples like that, Ben, it's one of those areas where, like you said, this is nascent, but I, I almost wonder if by creating a policy, you, you don't cause more problems than you're trying to solve. So we've got a ways to go, but I appreciate you putting this, putting this on and, and taking a stab at it.
Sure, and our intent is to work with HR. They typically put out the countywide applicable policy. So that's something that we're gonna go, go in with HR Alfon and reviewing that, as well as getting some input from the current PIOs in the county to see how this would actually affect them. So definitely a, a draft, but we wanted to get the commissioners' thoughts before we proceeded and make sure we were going in the right direction.
Great, thank you, appreciate it, Ben.
You bet. Thanks, Ben, that looks good.
Okay, I don't think we had scheduled public comment, but we could, we could take. Oh, it was, oh. Okay, we can hear a public comment? The typical kind of three-minute limit?
Are you opening it to public comment? This is Wendy Parmley.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It was on the agenda actually for public comment. I just, I so appreciated the presentation by the Public Defenders Group. I wanted to point out just a couple of things as they looked at their workload stats. Workload is 175% of Salt Lake, Salt Lake County. I wanted to remind the commissioners that that was, Salt Lake was the benchmark and, uh, for the prosecutor's office in Utah County when they increased FTEs by 17. So that, they did really great, a great job of looking at workload. And also to remind you that workload does not equal caseload. And so, and, and we're not at the end of the year yet, so it'll be interesting to see where, where those cases actually fall out. But I think workload is a better predictor and what the budget should be based on. And then also wanted to, wanted to remind the group that the capital case is going to take up much of the year and that will pull multiple prosecutors, or defenders, I'm, I'm certain, away from these day-to-day cases. And I don't know, I didn't see that in the presentation, but, but I'm sure in their, their budgeting presentation that, that, that they will include that. But just know that those, you know, looking up to our northern partner county and the, the, the appeal that took so much resource. I think it's important and paramount that we make sure that this Utah County Public Defenders Group has adequate and effective defense for our capital case. And, and I'm really sad that they're not trying to get the workload down to a, a, a normal FTE. I'm sad for my son, who every time I see him is drawn and tired and, and working until midnight. The, a full-time equivalent standard is 20, 80 hours. And they are asking to be able to decrease the workload to 25, 18 hours, to budget it to 25, 18. So I think that, you know, I appreciated the detail and I know they'll give additional detail as they tell you, you know, how they calculated that workload standard based on, you know, based on the studies that are out there. I'll, I'm really looking forward to the IDC's report of what the standard is. But I know that Utah County Defense is the, the, the standard. You know, they, they are more efficient and effective than any other organization and, and appreciated learning that five of the seven candidates for the two judgeships are coming from the Utah County Defense Department. So I think that that, you know, that says an awful lot about that group.
Okay, thank you.
And that's it.
Thank you. All right, is there any other public comment, Alice? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn.